I will now call to order the October 9th Southbridge School Committee and Town Council Joint Meeting at 7:04 PM, and we will do roll call of the school committee members.
Mr. Bishop, Ms. Dugall-
Present.
Dr. Page-
Excused.
Ms. Peliquin-
Present.
Ms. Ryan-
Present.
Ms. Shea-
Present.
Mr. Thomo-
Excused.
Counselor Adams-
Present.
Counselor O'Clair-
Present.
Counselor Daniel-
Excused.
Counselor DePietro-
Present.
Counselor Jovian-
Present.
Counselor Manna-
Excused.
Counselor Morales-
Present.
Counselor Nash-
Present.
Counselor Steve-
Present.
Five present from the school committee and five present from the town council.
We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Input. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to address the joint body of the school committee and town council? I'll ask one more time, is there anybody here tonight who would like to address the joint body of the school committee and town council? Seeing none, we will now move on to the Receiver Superintendent Presentation. Dr. Villar?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Is this Mike Cott?
Yep.
There we go. It's a pleasure this evening to have the opportunity to speak to both the school committee and the town council. I appreciate your time this evening. I see this as an opportunity to begin a dialogue about what's happening in the school system, to begin to understand about our district performance, to really begin to understand about our improvement strategies, and to begin our dialogue around budgetary concerns and needs. And I've said the word "begin" maybe five times because I view this as a process, and I think we're going to need to have many more conversations as we move towards that budget cycle. So with that said, three objectives, really clear: district performance, district improvement strategies, and our budgetary outlook. I do, again, want to express my appreciation for your time for being here. It's been an interesting start to this school year, I must say. I've described it, sometimes you make great plans, we have good intentions, and I've told staff, over the summer, in many ways, we built a fabulous sand castle. It looked great. And then, school starts, and everything you either overlooked or didn't plan thoroughly enough becomes quite apparent, and you know that you have hard work ahead of you. So September brings that to us every year, and so, we're happy we're in October because we're already seeing some improvement, and that'll be part of what we talk about. But I did want to start with a brief discussion about Language Arts and the MCAS results. These are sobering results. There is no way to sugarcoat it. The bottom line is we are in the bottom 5% of schools across the state. Tremendous amount of work is required. You know, although we do have some students who are demonstrating that they exceed expectations, which is a good thing that we really need to focus on, that tells us that we have students every day in our classes that are achieving at high levels. But the sad side of the equation is we also have students who are in need of greater instruction and more support and more help, if we're going to make the type of progress that we all know we need to make and can make to help our students. So this graph here reinforces one of our areas of great focus, which is we need to improve Language Arts instruction. When we take a look at mathematics, similar to Language Arts, we have some students who are meeting expectations, but the vast majority of our students are only partially meeting expectations. Again, through observation and a lot of work, what we do see is that we need to improve access to grade-level content, and increase rigor in our classrooms, and provide students with a great deal of extra support, because we have many students who have pressing needs, for sure. And the last of the three sobering graphs I'm going to share with you this evening is our starting point.
Dr. Villar, if you may. A lot of us are having trouble reading the actual charts.
I can make these available. I'll send them to each of your email addresses, and I can also narrate just some of the data for you, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I'd be appreciative. Thank you.
For sure. Again, and we'll start back at your English Language Arts. Moving from the left side of the screen to the right would be the desirable performance, so you want to see the farthest right bars to the highest. What you'll see here in our performance is the vast majority of the students fall into "partially meets expectations," which is the orangish color, across grade levels, and that varies. The other point I can make is that Grade 10's test is very different than the tests that students take in Grades 3 through 8. Grades 3 through 8 are taking a next-gen type of assessment online. It's the second year that it's been used, has very rigorous standards, nation-leading standards. Grade 10 uses an older assessment, and those standards are not as aligned to the rigor of the 8, Grade 3 through 8, so it's important to know. The point of this, and again, I'll be happy to send you the actual slides, and we'll post them on our website for folks, but at the end of the day, we're in the bottom 5%. So there's tremendous need for growth is really the purpose of the visual. And as you see, in math, it's the same criteria. Again, the test, Grades 3 through 8 in mathematics, has a different standard of rigor than the 10th grade test, in which is where you might see different scales. In the 10th grade test, we're expecting a new iteration in the years to come. Kindergarten assessment. We assess 136 kindergartners, so this chart adds up to 136. 112 are in needs of improvement or an intervention phase. 13 are in that middle strategic phase, and 11 are on grade level. So that's a sobering fact. This is an assessment that looks at letter naming fluency, which is a kindergarten skill set. That's a prerequisite to being able to learn to read, and it's an assessment we've given to all of our students. It tells us we have a great deal of work to do around Language Arts, and closing gaps, and helping students acquire the skills that are necessary to be good readers. These are things that we certainly, as I get further into the presentation, we are focused on this year. And again, it's a sobering fact, but necessary, that we make sure that each and every one of our teachers has a full understanding of the latest science around instructing children to read, because we have no margin of error. We have a great deal of need, and it is a critical part that students come out of our early schools learning to read, because at some point, we'll be transitioning them into reading to learn as they get older. So literacy is very important. So again, I share this graph so that you understand, we definitely have a lot of work ahead of us. It's sobering facts. The Turnaround Plan, which I know you're all familiar with, does an outstanding job of looking at all aspects of education and what we need to improve as a district. I'm focusing the district on three key areas, because candidly, it's essential that we do a very good job, and with change theory and the understanding of human capacity, we need to focus on some of the areas I just pointed out, and ensure that we bring to fruition plans to improve, for example, in Language Arts. And that requires a systemic focus. So this year, we're looking at improving instructional programs quality, and that translates into climate and culture, and Language Arts, which is literacy instruction in early school, and then English Language Arts in middle school and high school. Improving these areas is essential if we're going to have the academic foundation necessary to show long-term sustainable improvement in all content areas. Talent, in our efforts to retain, attract, retain, hire the best and brightest, is a critical area for us. It goes without saying that the past four years, we've seen massive amounts of turnover, and we need to stop that. We need to invest in our staff. We need to retain staff and build their capacity if we're going to see the type of improvement that our children require and deserve. To do all these things, we need to do a much better job of really taking a look at data. Not only financial data, but academic data, and probably most importantly, data around implementation of strategies. What is changing in adult behavior that we expect to impact learning on the student's side of the equation? So that's a critical component of our work. So when we talk about our priority of a quality instructional program, we're talking about improving climate and culture, so the conditions within schools. We want to see happy children, happy teachers, working hard and learning. We want to improve our Language Arts instruction, K-12. So to do this, we are pleased that we have some partners. DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has provided us support in various ways. One, we have a connection with the University of Connecticut and with EastCon, and that initiative is a climate and culture initiative called Positive Behavior Supports and Interventions. I'd encourage folks, when you have time, take a look at www.pbis.org. A lot of information there. This is a data-driven, well-researched approach to improving school climate and culture, and engaging students in learning. National datasets of tens of thousands of students have been studied for decades, and when done with fidelity, it has a tremendous impact on not only climate and culture, but student learning and engagement. So this is an area that we are committed to getting right, and we'll spend a great deal of time around. Early data this year, we've made some progress I can show in a graph later, but there's a lot of work to be done when you're talking about implementing a quality-tiered support for student behavior. We're also pleased that we have support of $100,000 from the state to implement a K-5 literacy program for students in our early elementary schools. We're working with a group called Momenta. Earlier on, they were Bay State Reading Institute. They've changed their name. Their expertise is literacy instruction, which ties exactly into some of the needs that we saw earlier. And they are working with us in the capacity of a building principal coach and teacher coach, and they spent last spring doing a needs assessment of the district, and identified curricular changes that we could make in the use of materials to support instruction, so that we could improve overall student performance. What I'd like to stress is one of the things we talked about was how can we utilize previous investments wisely to construct a quality instructional program for students without necessarily going out and buying a bunch of stuff, right? Because often, that seems to be the solution brought forth, is we need new stuff, new support materials. What we found through the analysis of the instructional program and materials purchased over the last four years, is that we had a national geographic Language Arts program that's highly rated and recommended for students, particularly students of second language origins, so English language learners, but very good for teaching vocabulary and science and social studies content to children, again, needs that we have as a district. They also identified that we had already invested in a program that taught students phonics called Foundations. We invested also previously in a program called Live Letter, to help young children learn their phonemes and phonemic awareness, excuse me, phonemic awareness. And we already had those programs. And finally, we had purchased a program several years ago called Being a Writer, which was an excellent writing program that was very structured. So working with Momenta, we pulled those resources together and created a new instructional program. So we didn't have to go out and buy all those programs, because we had them. In some cases, and being quite candid, we had them, they were still in wrappers. So the fact that we owned them, we're utilizing them. Now, I've purchased some teaching materials, some guide manuals and such to support that implementation, but we think it's very important that we now move forward with fidelity on that implementation. And we're creating tools, and I'm going to share some of those tools with you shortly, that help us monitor to the extent to which we are implementing that program of studies, pulling together those resources, but trying to articulate to teachers how they work together to make sure that children get a quality, balanced literacy instructional program. That means they learn phonics, phonemes, vocabulary, comprehension skills, they're all essential to become good readers as you grow older. Finally, on this slide, I think it's important to note, we are working with a group on our 6-12 Language Arts instruction, because we know from the datasets that the results aren't sufficient. So this group is working with us to look at the instruction in 6-12, and identify what are called open-source materials, utilizing textbooks, or actually, literature, I should say, that we own. We may need to purchase more literature for kids, but a book-based curriculum for 6-12, which is aligned with state standards. Kids need to be reading actual literature, discussing actual literature, writing about literature in robust ways, if we're to do well, based on what our state standards require, right? So it's essential that they actually have hands-on books. So we're working with instruction partners to develop a curriculum, actually, to select a curriculum that supports teachers in this work, utilizes literature, and will engage kids in robust dialogue around classic stories, classic literature that we probably all have read here. So the other area of focus is talent. I mentioned earlier, retaining employees, stopping the revolving door is a critical issue. When I'm asked by my boss, "What's the biggest issue you're facing?" I think it is the need for talent, in the sense that we need to keep our teachers. We can't keep training them every year. We can't bring in a new program every year. Right now, our best estimate is our retention rate is 55%. So replacing that many of employees on an annual basis is a recipe for us to not improve, that's for sure. So we need to work closely with our staff to solve some of these issues, and to ensure that we can keep staff. Last year, we hired about 78 staff members. This year, we're at 104. That's a lot of hiring. It's a lot of retraining. So we certainly need to improve that. So we started to take a look at our hiring process this summer. One of the things we wanted to do is see how quickly we could onboard people, because it's a race to talent, and we're at full employment as a nation, so there's plenty of, you know, folks are hired. There are not a line of teachers applying for jobs in any district at this point. Substitutes are a crisis level for many districts, because of the economy is humming along, quite candidly. So we went out and took a look at, and created a survey for the teachers we've hired, and we said, "How long did your hiring process take?" was one of the questions. So 57% of our hiring this summer took one week or less. We think that's pretty good. Two weeks or more, two weeks or less was 17% of the teachers that were hired this summer, and 21% took three weeks. So we're going to track that data, because on an annual basis, we want to get quicker and faster at offering positions and filling vacancies. We want to try to get to the market sooner, which is difficult when you have budget uncertainty, but it's essential that we hire the best, brightest, new teachers, as some of our teachers do move on. And then, more importantly, in many ways, working with the teachers association and school leadership, we have to find ways to make our current staff feel appreciated, supported, as if they are, in fact, making a difference, and provide them with the stated art training necessary to be good teachers in 2018. So there's a lot of work to do around that. We do have a career ladder structure that's relatively new, that does allow for some incentives to attract and retain some teachers. The final phases of that, we're still working out with the teachers union as far as two categories, one called an advanced teacher, which is a stipend position that would allow a teacher with expertise to have a slightly different role part of the time, engage them working on best practices, lessons, and working with other teachers. And then the other is a master teacher, again, stipend position, where they would actually be away from the classroom for a period of time, working with colleagues, part of our professional development for teachers. And so we're hammering out those explanations and definitions with the union now, as we speak. The area of data, very important, because all these things require information. So we are pleased that we went live with a new student information management system. It's called Aspen. So these systems store all the student demographic data, assessment data. They will store attendance, discipline. They interface with our special education, individualized education plan data, our civil rights 504 plan data for students. All interface and work off of the backbone of the Aspen Student Information Management System. So going live on that is actually quite a big deal, and that happened at the very end of the summer, and we have been fully on Aspen since school has started. Meant every person in the district had to learn how to use a new piece of software and use it in the same way. So a lot of kudos to John Parent and our technology department for really planning that out and working hard to make it as free of bumps as possible. Always tricky when that many people are learning something new. The other really important thing that I'm very happy about and really appreciate, the town council's support, and the town manager and his staff's support and collaboration around the selection and planning of the implementation of Munis. I can't underscore how important that is for the school district. It will not only allow us to have far more financial transparency, which I think everyone would say is a good idea and a good thing. It also will improve our human resources capabilities, our ability to process payroll, record-keeping, accounts payables, receivables, be much more user-friendly for our vendors. So that's a huge step forward. It's a long implementation cycle, unfortunately, because there is so much financial-sensitive data, but we're very pleased that that system is in place and we're moving forward with that. So I spoke about Language Arts and Climate and Culture as being really important objectives for the district this year, far and above all the other objectives that you might find in a turnaround plan. What I want to stress is how the process that we're taking to start to measure the progress of implementation. So what we look at is the data that's necessary to say, is this implementation being done with fidelity? So how do we know we did what we said we're going to do? How do we, or to what extent do we think we're doing it really well? And is it ultimately impacting student learning? Is it making a difference? And is it doing so cost-effectively, is another important question. So to do that, you have to look at outputs, which really, at the end of the day, they're observable, completed activities, and you have to look at outcomes, which are often short, mid, or long-term measurements or assessments of performance, either on the adult end of the equation or the student end of the equation. So for our Language Arts and Climate data, we've created a tool that we use, actually, either your cellphone or an iPad. It's a web-based, Google-based tool, it's a form, and we've listed some of the key aspects of those initiatives, based off of some rubrics that were created by some of the experts we're working with, but the key things we need to find in classrooms that suggest that behaviors are changing aligned with the expectations around Language Arts and around climate and culture. And with that tool, we've scheduled and conduct walkthroughs with building staff, principals, through classrooms every month. And we just gather data visually after spending time looking for evidence of these practices in place. That data is then analyzed, and we look at trends over time. It helps us begin to uncover whether or not we're making any progress with some of the training, our people implementing some of the things we've asked them to do, and sometimes, it tells us our plans haven't really been well thought out, and we need to go back to the drawing board. All of the above happens. This is a long list of different data points. Again, I can share you this slide with all of you, and you can look at it at your leisure, but, you know, for example, one of these items might be, "The educator posted three to five positively stated behavioral expectations in the classroom." What's that? That's an underpinning of positive behaviors interventions or supports. The idea of communicating and teaching in positive language your expectations, and communicating in a regular basis to students, and reinforcing it. So if they're not posted in the classroom, that's a key piece of moving forward with a really robust implementation. Another simple thing we look for is the teacher actively supervising students. So are they moving about? Are they interacting? Are they aware the students are all engaged? There are many data points listed here that we'll look for, but again, it's the ability to begin to quantify activity, to see if, over time, there are some changes. You know, we also look, for example, there's a strategy that teachers in the elementary school in particular, but it works K-12, called Turn and Talk. So as we're in the classroom, our teacher's setting the stage for students in a very specific way to turn and engage in conversation about a particular question the teacher may have posed. When students engage in robust conversation about a meaningful topic, we improve their language skills, their vocabulary, comprehension, and they also begin to develop a deeper understanding of the concept that they're talking about, and it's been proven in research to be effective. Well, we want to see that type of instruction, and so we track that. Again, there's ratio of teacher-to-student talk, various data points, but we collect all these points, and it goes into the system, and then, over time, we're able to, after a walk, it'll generate, we pull up, and what are the percentages of what was seen through all the various different people who've walked through the classrooms, about 15 minutes, and you start to gather. This is not something that statistically you'd want to use as, for example, the MCAS tests, which have been created by psychometricians, where every item, every question is carefully measured and balanced. This type of data is used for directionality. This essentially tells us, in that context, are we beginning to see a change over time? So it's important that, in fact, you look at it, and let me show you. Over time, you see a graph. Here, you have a blue graph and a red graph. Blue is the first instance of observation. Red is the second. Various data points, again, captured, turn and talk, are you monitoring the classroom, et cetera. And this is actual data, and what it shows is from the September view to the October view, great, many categories have actually improved. These are all micro-data points. These are just small behavioral changes. But what they're showing is in a short period of time, about three and a half weeks, with some focus, training, and the principal being involved in meeting with teams of teachers and talking about expectations, we have measurable information that suggests that has moved the needle. Practice has changed a bit in classrooms. It's only a few weeks. As you look at this, over time, we begin to say, okay, we have a level of confidence at how much actual time is being done in the classroom using certain strategies. The next question will be, how does that impact student learning on assessments? And you begin to juxtapose those two and determine, are we on the right course? So this is first phase, but it's important data to be looking at. The other thing that these data have helped us see, only in three weeks, is the need to reallocate resources. If you're not happy with outcomes, and you've put resources into certain programs, and you're not seeing the needle move as you anticipated, I believe then you have to talk about redistributing resources. And we shouldn't be waiting until the end of the school year to do that. So often, we set things once, and then somewhat mindlessly continue with the plan regardless of feedback on the ground. What we're trying to do is create a plan that's responsive to feedback on the ground, and reallocate resources accordingly. So in this instance, with our stated objective that climate and culture has to improve in our schools, and then spending a lot of time in the schools the first three weeks, we knew that we needed more resources, particularly at our secondary school, because candidly, the climate was not what we want. We want to see more improvement. So we've created four engagement counselor positions at the high school and middle school, and these folks are certainly extending and helping the administration establish what we expect in the climate and culture. Long way to go, but an important change, and now we'll monitor the results of this investment and see if we get the impact that we expect. What we've also needed to do, based on information at our elementary schools, is increase the amount of special education courses, called sub-separates, to give kids more of a continuum, which means the opportunity, if necessary, to be in a self-contained classroom for a period of the day, if not the whole day, depending, again, on their individualized education plan. There's a lot of rules and regs around that, but we're looking at more support for students with emotional difficulties, and we're looking at more support for students with autism. And this is based on the data that we've seen in the last month. So those investments have been made. So I know I'm talking a lot. It's a long presentation, but it's important. The concept here that I hope I'm driving home is- here that I hope I'm driving home is we're trying to find ways to measure our progress and to react to what we're doing. That is obviously shifting of resources, and it's not necessarily like what most school committees or town councils have heard. It's definitely, I wouldn't say cutting edge, but it's certainly applying some business principles into the education realm in a way that I think is really important and where I've seen it work because of the careful use of data and determining whether or not you're having an impact, I believe is ultimately going to lead us to the right outcomes, improved student learning, and hopefully in an efficient manner. Because what I recognize is there's not a money tree anywhere here, and the likelihood of large increases in budgets is nil. So it's more about what can we do to improve practice in a very fiscally responsible way as we move forward, which is why I know you all want to talk about budget, right? Because budget is a balancing act that you, particularly town council members, unfortunately on an annual basis, get to face, right? I work closely with the fire and police chiefs. We have candid conversations, and I know that we're all wrestling for the same dollars, right? And it's how do we work together to put those dollars to best use for Southbridge? Because it's all about Southbridge. It's Southbridge Schools, Southbridge Fire, Southbridge Police. It is a community effort. So we have to do this as responsibly as possible. And I do appreciate many good candid conversations with the town manager Ron about this, and I'm very hopeful that as we move forward, we can find ways to get the schools funding necessary to improve, but do it in a responsible way that works for the town. For those of you who've been on school committee or likely the town council for some time, this graph won't surprise you. The dark blue is the salaries of the teachers in the district, all staff members, I should say, 69% of our expenditures. That shouldn't be terribly surprising. We hire mostly people, people do the teaching. It's a significant percentage. In some communities, it'd be higher. I want to point out that here in Southbridge, the town side budget holds our health insurance, which is another very large expenditure. So the whole picture of cost of our staff isn't really here because there is another side, which is held by the town around health insurance. You'll see, we have a sliver here. It's a little bit orange, it's called benefits. It's 905,003% of our budget. That is not where our health insurance is carried. That's things like unemployment, which is extremely high, and we can talk more about that, I'm sure, in a little bit. It's a cost driver, but that is categories there under benefits. Our Medicare payments for employees on payroll goes there, that's another very large expenditure. But the idea is I want to be transparent. There's more costs than 69% when we talk about staffing, all right? That is carried by the town. Special education, 9%. It's the yellow piece there. $2,681,000 of special education tuition, significant cost. Transportation, 9%, $2.8 million in transportation. Maintenance, 181,000. Contracted services, $1,005,000. Supplies, 664,000. We have some other expense, 144,000 on a missed utilities, which is $738,000. But again, the real takeaway from here is most of our costs are wrapped up in transportation, special education, and salaries. Those are the real main drivers, probably not surprising to folks with experience in education budgets. The federal and state government, as well as local foundations, are helping us out. I wanted to point this out. And special thanks to Margot Farrick, the Assistant Superintendent, who's worked really hard at trying to get us extra money, has been quite successful so far. We were awarded $350,000 for the 21st Century Community Learning Grant, which will impact our West Street School and the middle school, providing after-school programming for kids in two through five and kids in the middle school. So that's a huge grant, $350,000, likely to be renewed up to three years. Significant support. I pointed out earlier, but we do receive $958,000 direct support from DESI. And that money has allowed, obviously, for us to do some major upgrades of systems like helps with Munis, some of our teacher development, and some of the consultants we've worked with have been covered through that funding. And then again, Ms. Farrick's hard work. The Health Foundation of Central Massachusetts has awarded us $100,000 to support our positive behaviors interventions and supports, which is substantial savings for us in a sense because that offsets costs that we were going to invest in. We can now invest more and go further faster in improving our capacity, so that's very good news. I do want to point out, when we talk about, again, 69% of our budget is staffing, and we've had some turnover. So obviously, you're not going to be able to read that from your distance, so, and I apologize for not having that larger. But at Eastford Road School, since the start of the year, we had two teacher vacancies and one EA vacancy. I created a new position at Eastford Road, a librarian position, and I'm pleased to say that person started today. Quite candidly, I could not fathom how we could have an early childhood school without a library that was functioning. So I was pleased to find a way to do that. Current vacancies at Eastford Road, we are looking for a special education teacher and a school engagement officer, similar in role to what we have at the secondary schools, but helpful in ways such as on our buses, which we do at times have some challenges with students on buses, particularly in the afternoon. At Charlton Street School, we started the year with four teacher vacancies. We have one school engagement officer position there. Adjustment counselor is currently vacant, as well as that engagement officer. At West Street School, we had three teacher vacancies at the beginning of the year. We now have two teachers currently vacant, two EAs, and a school engagement officer. So unfortunately, we're not fully staffed. At the middle school, we actually lost two APs right after school started, assistant principals, I'm sorry, four teacher vacancies. What we've done is we've elevated a person to a dean position for, in place of an AP, assistant principal position. We've engaged two folks to be our school engagement officers. We were able to transfer a assistant principal from the high school to the middle school. They currently are looking for an adjustment counselor, and they have four teaching vacancies. At the high school, again, we lost an AP of assistant principal, and we had four teacher vacancies as the year began. So we created the two engagement officers there. We currently still have vacancies in teachers, in science and math, and we are looking for an engagement officer there. I recently hired an individual, Javier Gutierrez, who worked for us last year. He had left us when his position was eliminated. I'm pleased that he's rejoined us as the AP at the high school, started today, as a matter of fact. So that vacancy was filled. Southbridge Academy, which is our now therapeutic day school, since last year, we applied and changed the program so that it's now seen as a hybrid therapeutic day school, which allows us to provide educational programming that matches things like the Grow School and other alternative placements. Certainly does a good justice, a good service for our families, allowing their children to stay in town. It also saves us a great deal of money, which I'll get into in a little bit. But that, the academy started the year down one EA, but right now, we have created a teacher position and a clerk position that need to be filled. So as we look ahead, there are several issues that we're monitoring. Out-of-district tuition, so Southbridge Academy, we invested in the program last year, and as you remember, way back to that pie chart, 9% of our general fund money goes for tuition for special education students. So that's a huge percentage of our money. So investing in Southbridge Academy, to me, makes an awful lot of good sense from at least a business perspective, for financial purposes. So we added staff and technical experts last year. To date, we have returned 11 students to the Southbridge Public Schools. Those 11 students that were being serviced in out-of-district placements, so that's saving us approximately $452,000 in this year's budget because of the changes in that school. The fact that we now have this placement, we can hopefully prevent students from leaving the district and continue to find ways of saving funding moving forward. Our unemployment cost, it's been a sore subject for quite some time, and I've been candid, like, we have to stop this turnover of staff. So right now, in the first two months, we spent $156,000 in unemployment cost. Now, we did lay off 36 people last year when our budget was cut, about $3.1 million. It's a substantial amount of money. It's about 45% of the overall $350,000 budgeted for unemployment. Good news is we know that two very expensive unemployment cases are now off the books, so it's about $70,000 that we will not see in the next month. So these numbers are going to come down, but we're watching them very closely and recognize that, you know, we really need to find a better way to spend money than unemployment, Facilities. So conditions of schools, we've had some issues this year. It has been September, late August and September in particular, really humid, really wet. We were running fans in all of our schools. Unfortunately, we had a staff member fall and break her arm on a floor. Very wet conditions. We had every fan deployed in the district. It is a concern when the weather turns like that. Probably the moistest September I can remember in years, but it was a concern. We have a leaky roof, coal ab, that I know, again, thanks to the town council's support, that roof funding has happened and repaired, is budgeted for. We also have to look forward to some vehicles as we're considering our budget. Some of our snowplow trucks, one of them in particular is not working. We have a wheelchair van that needs to be replaced soon, so the question will be, what is soon? And it's too early for me to give you a time, but again, these are capital items that I'm just beginning to create that list to be very transparent around. You know, in places some major capital needs, despite some of this, we are trying to make some improvements. Couple of you were out today, know, over at Coal Ave, and the ugly trees in the front were pulled out over the weekend, and some nice hosta were planted, and some mulch. All of that was because of Mr. Racine and his staff uncovered an unexpended grant for building improvement from quite some time ago, and were able to put those monies to use, improving the look of Coal Ave, which I think is actually an important gesture that those trees and things were quite old. So a prudent planting. The crew tell me, you know, we plow snow into there every year. Well, these are hosta, they're going to get cut, and you plow your snow, next spring they're going to regrow. So, simple, but I would like to say thanks to Mike for some smart planning there. So we look ahead. Again, IT, information technology. This council, very pleased that, for, I guess it's three years now, the town council has supported capital expenditures for Chromebooks in schools, which is particularly generous. Super necessary for a 21st century school to have kids using technology. We acknowledge that we have to think about this because that lease is up. So this has to be part of the plan. What are we going to do to ensure that our kids have the latest technology? You know, the useful life on these objects is generally less than five years. There is a reason why they're so inexpensive. They're not the most robust computers, for sure, but they are super well-used in the sense of management. I don't get into technical details, but we don't need to have an awful lot of technicians because of the Chrome OS. But we'll look at that as we put together our budget. The technology at the middle high school is actually starting to get old. It was brand new, like a blink, I'm sure, for many of you, but now we're pushing seven years on some of that stuff, and the tech world, that is old. So that's something we have to look at and really begin to plan, particularly projectors, where bulbs sometimes cost more than a projector, and whether, desktop computers, and whether or not there are alternatives to these projectors that might be less expensive moving forward. We are beginning to look at that and come up with some plans. Transportation, we have higher special education enrollment. We have, we anticipate higher after-school club and athletic participation. Some of that's happening now without the 21st Century Grant, which is a good problem to have. We want kids involved in these things, but we have to look at that and how we're routing kids and whether or not we have sufficient busing to get that done in a meaningful timeline. And candidly, I'm looking at the morning bus routes at the high school, middle school, because we have a circumstance where kids are being dropped off about 7:00 PM, excuse me, AM. Staff aren't arriving till 7:20 contractually. We're creating a 20-minute period where we have our engagement officers and school admin, but a lot of kids. And is that really the best way to start school? Can we get those buses closer to the start of school? Is a, it's a question that's been asked. Sounds easy, but there's a lot of logistics because those same buses need to turn back around and go out and pick up kids for elementary runs. And so there's a downstream impact on any change with that, but we're exploring it because we want to create the system where everything makes sense. And so the bus routes, the start of school, the end of school, all of that, try to synchronize that best as possible, again, trying to save resources, but also creating a condition that's best for learning. The last item to point out is just on trash recycling in general. We're aware and are watching the rollout, the unfolding of the issue with Casella's Corporation, and we're aware of a great amount of trash that we produce in our schools. A lot of it's food, specific food trash. So we're actually reaching out to other towns and school systems to see what they're doing with that, just to have a contingency plan, because we don't know where that's all going to go. But we do know we have multiple dumpsters. We know that if there's a pay-for-trash type of circumstance, we have to think about illegal dumping in our dumpsters and what we could do to protect our investment in those dumpsters. So those are things that are on our radar. I've talked a long time, a lot of information. Again, we'll put this on our website, we'll send you copies, but I'm certainly happy to answer questions that you may have, in hope that we can have another joint meeting as we start preparing the budget and start to get into some numbers and begin to see what these costs are going to look like as we move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Villar. Is there anybody here who would like to ask questions or make comments? Councilor Stevens?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've got a couple of questions. One thing is that if you go back to the, when you were talking about kindergarteners coming into the school system, and how many of them are unprepared, especially in reading. What's the school system doing to help to reach out to the parents to start them reading at home? Because that's obviously where, I would assume, most of us started reading at home, not in the school system, so. And do we have any idea of why, if the kids are coming in into kindergarten and without the level of reading that they should have, why aren't they reading at home?
All great questions. So these data are three weeks old. So since I've seen that snapshot, I have not been able to explore all those items that you mentioned. I think they're all legitimate avenues for exploration. Certainly, what we know from research is that one of the best investments you can make is quality preschool education for students. There's been studies done now for decades that have shown, over time, that investment sustains. And I know we do have some programs in town. I'm also where we don't have universal preschool, so that, you know, is an area of improvement. I candidly, at the moment though, have been focused on what can I control right now? And how can I impact change with what I have in front of me? We do have family liaisons, and I do think that we should be planning and figuring out how to help parents access materials aligned with our instructional strategy so that they can work with their children. But quite candidly, in the period of time, we haven't gone down that road yet. But it's an avenue that I think would be quite fruitful, certainly helping parents understand there are a lot of cool tools out there now with tech, on cellphones and such, that can help kids learn a lot of these concepts before they come to school, in pretty engaging ways. I've seen it, my youngest is just seven. His older sister, who's 23, learned very differently when it came to these things than what that seven-year-old learned, you know, five, six years ago. So yeah, there's a role for all of that. Great questions, but again, my candid response is we're focused on our instruction right now, but I do think a long-term plan, engage the early childhood centers, and find a way to give parents more tools.
Okay. To follow up with that, based on what you just said then, how do you make sure that the students, because I remember, I don't know if you heard, there was an NPR story a couple of days ago, talking about students who have an issue with doing homework and things like that, and being able to catch up with what's going on in school because they don't have internet access at home?
I would say that's, again...
And how do we make sure that the kids can do everything that they need to do for homework and that kind of? homework and that kind of stuff without, if they lack the technology?
Yeah. That's a problem that's been, the, the technology gap.
Absolutely.
Is, is a real national issue that we have to look at. You know, my, I've explored it in other districts and other roles, and there are some technology choices where kids can leave school with everything downloaded before they go. That does exist. There are also communities that have been able to come together with local cable companies and provide more Wi-Fi and those solutions. We're not there yet. I think the best we can do is work with our staff to make sure that students are leaving school with the equipment they need to get their homework done. And perhaps the best opportunity we have is our 21st Century Grant, which is going to allow us to have after-school program, have kids on campus longer. Anyone that goes to the middle school, high school in the evening can see that there's usually a score of kids hanging out. They don't really want to go home yet. So, it would be nice if we had some things and activities for them to do there while they're on campus with Wi-Fi. If they're on a school computer, at least, they have access. It's not open anymore for just anyone to use. But, the idea behind it would be to allow them to work on their homework at school. We are in the implementation stages of the 21st Century Grant. I've been pushing, how can we make it reach to high school, too? I've met with staff at the high school a couple of weeks ago, where I heard with my ears, many staff members saying they would be willing to do clubs for kids. So, there might be some opportunities to give more, more after-school time for kids. But, again, that's a very complex social issue, to be candid.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Stevens. Counselor Claire?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for you. I have a couple of questions. I know that I'm trying to reread my notes in some kind of good way, because we didn't get the presentation ahead of time, and I believe that I might be talking about the Aspen, is the Aspen, the Aspen program that you had mentioned earlier, did that correspond with, with the graphs, with all of this self-made information over the course of several weeks, or was that something completely separate?
Thank you for the questions. Good opportunity to clarify. So, Aspen, although is capable of holding that type of data, we're using Google for that. So, our email provider is G Suite, or through Google, which is a very cost-effective school email system. And as a part of that, we have access to Google Drive, which is, again, a cloud-based storage, and Google Forms, and Google Sheets, and their whole Office software suite. So, we're able to use Google Suite to create a form, which allows you, on a handheld device, to enter in the data, and it automatically populates a spreadsheet. So, it's a low-tech, high-tech solution. It's very low-cost because it's part of our email solution. So, that's just for us to gather those, those data. It would be far more sophisticated of us to put it into Aspen, but we just implemented Aspen, and Google works pretty user-friendly, so we haven't even thought to do that.
Okay. Thank you for answering that part of the question. So, is it, the, the data points that you're looking at and the data points that you're researching throughout all of these students, is this, is this an implementation of a proven approach? You know, is this something that you've borrowed from, from somewhere else where you, there are documented results, or is this something that you've, that you've put together throughout this district, just to, to gauge kind of the... The... Culture. Culture. Thank you. Thank you. And also, my, in that same vein, you know, I'm curious as to what the sample pool is for the students that we're gauging these results on, and, you know, what the ultimate goal is to get these students out of what would be perceived as the low end of the spectrum and into the higher end of the spectrum, to, you know, go a little bit further as to your collecting the data, what do we ultimately plan on doing with the data?
So, a couple of things. First, so the instructional approaches, curricular and instructional approaches, those are based off of reviews of literature of what are perceived as best practices in industry. So, like, for example, we worked with Momenta to take a look at the curricular alignment of our materials with Massachusetts Standards, and which materials do we own are capable of supporting instruction that way? So, that's done based on some really scientific principles of what's best practice in our field, like Nat Geo, for example, is a well-rated curricular resource for teachers. The assessment that you're talking about for students in kindergarten is called the DIBELS, which originally came from the University of Oregon many, many years ago, and it's a widely utilized, again, psychometricians-created assessment. So, it is valid and reliable to be used in school districts. And so, that means those results mean the same, no matter where you give that assessment. Those results can be what we call generalized from one population to the next. It's a very powerful measurement, and it's a very accurate measurement. Our implementation data is based off of observation. Now, that is not scientific data observation in the sense that we haven't gone out and conducted the statistics behind, and it would be called getting a P-value in every question and looking at that question, seeing if 50 people out of 100 were answered this question, they'd, you know, 50 would be on top, 50 would be on the bottom, that's a perfect item. All right? So, that type of test development wouldn't apply in this circumstance. What we're looking for are evidence of behavioral changes in our staff. Are our staff implementing these things the way they've been asked to through training? And that's based on a cohort of people walking in and looking for indicators based off of a rubric developed by our trainers. And so, when you do that, I would say it's not a statistically sound number, but it is one that helps you understand directionality, whether or not there's enough indication that there's momentum moving forward. You asked where this comes from. A lot of it's based off of research done by Dr. Doug Reeves about 25 years ago now, implemented in many districts across the country. I can think of one in particular, Bristol, Connecticut, where they implemented this. It's called data teaming and data for, data-driven decision-making. You might have heard of, there's tons of text now. The whole point is to begin to measure your implementation, stack it up against student performance, and use that as a barometer for whether or not your research-based strategy is working. So, I'm happy to supply you, there's a large list of text associated around the research, around the efficacy of this type of work. A lot of demonstration schools showing significant progress when folks really hunker down on a couple of key strategies and make sure you implement with fidelity. But, would be really, there's quite a really interesting things I could point out to you if you're interested in doing some reading about it.
Okay. And as far as the, the sample pool size?
So, a sample size would be relevant if you're doing a survey. And so, when you're doing a statistically valid survey, you would need to have a certain sample size to make your responses valid. So, in this instance, we're not conducting a survey, so we wouldn't have a sample size. In the assessment, the DIBELS assessment that we use, again, because that's a valid and reliable measure, it's based on each individual student's performance, and it would be measured against themselves and other students across the nation.
So, every student in the Southwood School System will be gauged based on the set of criteria that you've put together within this test?
So, the DIBELS assessment was given to all kindergarten students. It's a foundational assessment that looks at their letter name influency. And yes, that is a standardized assessment that we give as a early indicator to let us know where kids are starting school. They'll be reassessed over time with the same measure, and we'll be able to track their progress.
You would, and I could have, you know, misheard, but it sounded like you had already, you had already demonstrated through some of those graphs, positive movement through these tests that you're speaking of.
So, what we, what we saw was, in our observational data, that adult behavior has changed in four weeks around the instructional practices that we have been providing their training. So, for example, asking teachers to state the rules of their classroom in positive language using three to five bullet points, for example, we're seeing increased adherence to that. Active supervision of students, increased role, teachers better understanding how we're asking them to do that and the training they've been given to do that. So, we're seeing evidence of folks absorbing that information and applying that information in their classrooms. The next link would be, do we see a relationship between that change in behavior and increased student performance? That's going to take time, because we're now looking for the changes in the instructional program.
So, the, the criteria that you're looking on is based on teacher behavior, but you're also measuring the, or teacher implementation, but you're also measuring how the children are reacting to such new criteria, or, you know, these, these different data points that you're going through. I guess I'm having trouble understanding what this process is. It sounds like there's some new positions that have been added in order to go through and, and look through all of this and oversee the program. I believe that you had said that there are four new hires to monitor this information, and I'm just trying to gain a better understanding as to, you know, it, it looks like you have a graph that shows, that shows progress over the course of several months. And I'm trying to understand where those data points come from, how reliable they are, and if there are, if there's another community or another school system that are doing exactly what we're doing and have shown documented success to prove that this is something that we should be moving forward with, instead of, you know, hiring another ELL teacher or, you know, a community liaison, or somebody with boots on the front lines, that, that, you know, the hires to monitor this specific program is, is something that behooves us as a community and our, and our school system?
So, you've asked a lot of questions there?
I did, I'm sorry.
A lot of clarification. So, we'll back it up and start again. So, we measure adult behavior because teachers teach kids. But, teachers have to use research-driven approaches to get the best results for kids. That's science. Lots of science around that. So, what we've done is, we've worked to identify what are some of those practices, and then we've provided training in what those practices are. And then, we go and look to see to what extent people are doing that. We just try to get an idea, are people actually doing what we've asked them to do? Are they doing it regularly? Do it with fidelity? Then, you look at the other side of the equation, is that having an impact on student learning? Is it making more kids do well? That takes time to measure. Often, in education reform, what you see is, we just measure kids all the time. What we know with that is, you lose instructional time because you're assessing too much. So, here is, let's see what we're doing, make sure we're doing what we think well. Is it having an impact on kids? If the answer is no, over time, then you have to revisit your strategy. Is it being impactful or not? Because if it's not, you have to wonder why you're going to continue if you're not getting the result. So, that's important. Another important point, the four engagement counselors are hired to work in schools. They're not working on monitoring this progress. I monitored this progress, and my leadership team monitors this progress, which incorporates building principals. So, there's a district leadership team, but the building principals meet with me once a month, and we go over this collectively and hold ourselves accountable for progress. And if we're not seeing progress, then we talk about what do we need to do differently? And out of those conversations is where we decided we needed engagement people in the schools. So, that was a collective decision that needs to do that. Where this works, again, there's a whole series of places where this type of approach works. Data-driven decision-making is now 20 years old in education, and there's probably 1,000 proof points as to how it works. Again, I pointed out where my mentor worked was Bristol, Connecticut, and they did an excellent job of improving a district. Late 1998 to 2000, tremendous growth. Doug Reeves lives in Boston, Massachusetts. He's written about 40 books, is internationally known, has studied this extensively. The key is focus, is really what it turns out to at the end of the day. Fidelity of implementation and making sure what you do is impacting kids, and if kids aren't improving, you got to revisit what you're doing. That's really the core of all of this.
Are you finished, Counselor Claire?
For now, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Jordan?
Thank you. First off, through the chair, to, thank you very much for having us here tonight on behalf of the town council. I appreciate it. I've certainly had a few meetings with you, Dr. Villar, and I certainly enjoy the conversations that I've had with you. As a follow-up to Counselor Claire's conversation with you, the DIBELS is specific to the elementary school kindergarten, correct?
Yeah, it's an assessment. That particular sub-test is particular to our kindergarten. The DIBELS assessment, you can use up to grade five. There's all kinds of...
Right. So, the, the initial test and where you see that measurable difference is, is over time, but just measuring the kindergarten kids, those were the data points that we were talking about, the measurable literacy phonics. Now, as far as the school engagement workers that you have, the key issue in the conversations that we've had, the conversations that the community have, is the culture and climate of the schools. And by, just as a follow-up to that, these engagement counselors are there to assist the building principals, the assistant principals, and the behaviors of, of everyone in the schools.
That's correct.
To increase that culture and climate, correct?
Absolutely. It's an essential part of the equation. We need the positive side, but, you know, you also have to have some consequences and accountability, and so, we need to make sure that the school runs like a school.
Okay. So, certainly, you've only been in the district since when? I apologize.
February.
So, February. So, what has been your experience is to the feedback your staff has given you as to the implementation, because it has been evident, the criticism that throughout the years by the state and by others, is the lack of consistency because we've had so many changes. And I've always been a firm believer, and the conversations that I've had with you, I believe, is the fact that in order for our staff and our students, more importantly, to have buy-in, they have to believe that this is a long-term plan. How receptive has your staff, or have you been able to gauge your staff's buy-in into what you're trying to put forward in the district?
It's a great question, because I think it touches on a nerve that folks have, a raw nerve where they are absolutely waiting for me to leave, right? That, that there's this sense of, there'll be, again, another leadership change, another direction change. And, you know, if you're a teacher, that is the worst circumstance for you, because you're kind of left like a rudderless ship in the ocean, like, what is our direction? So, I still hear people saying, you know, well, is he going to be here? How long are you staying? Because there's that concern. And it's, I candidly believe it's going to take a while before people believe that I'm a serious guy and I want to be here until it gets better, right? That we're going to improve. But, that, I think, is a real concern that teachers have. The other thing that I hear from teachers is, they want to be supported. I've met extensively with the high school staff, I communicate with the leadership of their association frequently. I'm in buildings all the time, and what I see and hear is, we want to be supported. They're working really hard. It's a very difficult job to be a teacher, no matter where you are, and then you introduce some of the instability that we have, and it makes it even that much harder. So, I got people who are working themselves sick, like, they're, they're driving hard. They need to feel supported. So, I think those are the two major issues I'm hearing from staff, like, hey, is leadership going to stay? Are we staying the course? Should I invest in this? And I can say yes, but it's going to be a while before I believe they believe me. So, I'm not going to stand there and say, yeah, I think they all believe me, because I don't think they do. I think they're all waiting to see. So, we have to send that message of consistency, of we're going to stay the course, and it's going to take a while before we prove what we're saying, because that's really what people are going to look for, is action. Just like I'm looking for changes of action in classrooms, they're looking at me for, what actions am I taking to commit whether or not I'm going to be here and if we're staying the course? And again, the other one is providing them support. And that's why those engagement counselors were so important at the high school. There was no doubt. I spent plenty of time, and they needed more people to make sure that things were on the way they go. And it's work in progress, to say the least, but I think it's better already, and we're going to stay on it. We need a learning environment to support all kids to be successful, and I always say, happy kids, happy teachers, and then you get learning. We don't always have evidence of that, and it's really important that we do.
Okay. And just as a final comment, I look forward to working with you throughout the year and having another follow-up meeting, whenever we can schedule it, to assess the progress, especially as we work through the budget process, because we're fully committed to education and spending the dollars the best way to get the very best for all students that we have in the district. So, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and ask your questions.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Are there any other numbers? Oh, yes, for Counselors' Leaks, excuse me.
Thank you again, Madam Chairman. I take a follow-back, a follow-up on the whole engagement counselor thing. One thing I always, I wanted to take a little clarification on, first of all, is what exactly is the difference between an engagement counselor and an adjustment counselor?
A lot. It's a great question. So an adjustment counselor are licensed professionals that have the ability to work with students in social-emotional context, social work background, essentially. Our engagement counselors, we try to have a very positive name, is to help kids re-engage into the classroom, to be sure that they're in locations they're supposed to be, so far less technical work, but very much relationship-driven. Our most effective person hit the ground running because he's had time in the, in the building and lives in the community, knows kids' families, and boy, does that help, you know, get kids to stay focused and think about the right reaction to some circumstance. I should mention, the principal did send a letter out to families, and we are sincere when we say, if we have family volunteers that are willing to be core-checked, because we have to follow the law, but we'd, we'd be happy to train folks, to have them come and, and work in our schools, and to help contribute in our cafeteria, and provide some adult role models for kids in schools. Getting a climate that's conducive to teaching and learning is a community thing, right? It's all the teachers, it's the principals, it's all of us have to work together, we all have to be on the same page. If, if kids just look to, you know, the engagement counselor as the person that keeps them in line, that won't work.
Totally, absolutely.
It's gotta be all of us. So that's an open invitation that Mr. Danby did send to families.
Okay, excellent. I'll add a follow-up on that. So are these, so are these engagement counselors paid, unpaid, and if they're being paid, how are they being paid? And how can, how can we maintain, how can we, how is the system being set up so that either we don't need them when, by, by the end of the system, by the end of the changes that we need, or that can be funded continuously?
So it's gonna come down to priorities, and whether or not they have an impact, right? So they are being funded out of general budget at the moment. They are $45,000 salaries, so it's plenty of money, and it's certainly something that keeps my attention, but also, if we go and state that climate and culture and literacy instruction are our number-one priorities, and our initial data is telling us our climate's not where it needs to be, we need to do something. But you're absolutely right, as we come around the corner to a budget proposal, we have to look at sustainability and value. Did it work? Did it make a difference? Now, it's only, they haven't even been staffed up in all schools.
Right.
So I don't know the answers to those questions, but we'll be looking at that, because I have to present a budget that's sustainable, one that, you know, can also meet our educational objectives. So the proof will be in the pudding later on, no doubt.
And I guess to follow up that, if, if, it would seem logically that if you've got so many teacher vacancies, I would think they would be a higher priority than filling engagement counselor jobs.
So we have been advertising, we advertise within seconds of getting a resignation, but that you need to have applicants. And unfortunately, we do not have a robust applicant pool.
Okay.
As well as that administrative jobs, too. So at this time of year, it's very difficult, and with the economy at full employment, I think it's even harder. But that is a, again, my number-one problem, I look at it systemically, is talent. We need to be able to attract and keep talent.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Oh, Martina.
Two questions. I loved your budget presentation, but again, I really need some numbers. As, as far as it sounds, everything is wonderful, but I still like to see some numbers, because when I took accounting, that's what, day one, they gave me little packets, and I had to fill out numbers, and my final test was numbers. We haven't even seen the final budget for last year. Did we, did we make it?
So, the year-end report has been filed with both the state and, and the town treasurer has a copy of it. We did close out last year's budget, my understanding, we returned two cents to the town, so we spent it to literally two cents, and that document has what you're looking for, which is the year-end accounting of all the expenditures. The budget side is an imperfect projection that goes 18 months out, right?
I understand that.
You start making those projections now, so what, what you've asked for is, has been filed, and it will be made available to you, I would expect, at some point.
No, I may, I asked for both. I have a checkbook, I understand that that is just a snapshot of what it is today. I'd like a snapshot monthly, or at least bi-monthly, of where we are in expenditures. You talked about the roof leaking. These are all issues that are only fixed by numbers. You're talking about hiring. We still need to look at the numbers, the town council, or the people who have to pay these bills, and Mr. Jovan and I were just discussing a year when superintendent looked us in the eye and said everything was just fine, that money was in the budget, and it was not, and we ended up $3 million in the hole. We need to see the numbers. Number two, in terms of climate, how is the discipline, because that has been an overriding issue in our town, that's one of the main reasons why so many parents are sending their kids to other schools. How would you say that the discipline is going this year?
So as, as this conversation has unfolded, the data suggested we needed to add the engagement counselors, because the climate and culture, which is part of that measure, is discipline, is not where it needs to be. We've seen dramatic improvement in just the last few weeks, but it is an area that I am not satisfied with, and we'll continue to make climate and culture our number-one priority until our schools have happy teachers and happy students and things are humming along. Right now, that is not always the case, and that's why we're investing in those positions, why we're working on PBIS, and why those remain the primary objective.
Counselor Jovan?
Just as a follow-up, I know Counselor Claire is looking for a question. As to your budget, we had a conversation earlier today, and yes, the year-end report is due October, and if our finance director does have it, we will ask for that report from her, because it has been filed with her and with the state, and perhaps we will add it to our EHS agenda to just have a presentation as to the year-end, which it's great that you came in the balance. Ron's not happy because it was only two cents, because he was looking for more, but he's always looking for more. As to the current year's budget, I mean, that's always a, a concern, and I do feel your pain when it comes to the KVS system, because that is a nightmare to try to pull accounts from, so hopefully, that doesn't solve today's issue as to where you're at. I'd certainly welcome maybe for the next meeting, joint meeting that we have, a financial update as to where we're at, this is where we anticipate those budgets are moving items. I certainly understand that, and I know Munis will fix that, that we will be able to push a button and be able to get all the charts of accounts and be able to, to see that. But I think it is a good question to just say, have a checkpoint maybe mid-year, say, this is the anticipated, well, this was the budget we put forward, this is how much money we have left, those transportation issues will be ferreted out at some point as to where we're at, so we'll hold that over. My recommendation would be for our next meeting, to maybe have a little bit more details as to financial status, not only on the town side, but the school side, if that's okay with you, Dr. Vilar.
Well, it's certainly, my objective is to establish a routine of transparency, and you know, quite candidly, as a receiver, that obligation, that responsibility weighs pretty heavy. You know, sometimes folks focus on the power side of receivership, well, with power comes responsibility, right? So I'm charged with the management of that budget in a way that's quite unique, and believe me, it, it does make me concerned. And so, yes, it'd be great that we can get to that place where there's confidence in these numbers, and we're showing information that, that you can then feel good about. So that is where we're striving to do. As we get to budget season, more and more detail has to be available, so that's our plan.
Counselor Claire?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Are you, are you gonna send this out to us, the presentation?
Yeah, I've said a couple times, we'll send it out. We also put it on our website, so I can have my assistant do that for us.
It's, it's, it's hard, like, I do have a lot of notes on here and a lot of questions, but as I'm writing the notes and trying to read the different data points that are up there, you know, a lot of them are incomplete. So if I could reach out to you, either by email or meetup, with additional questions that I do have about all of this, that would be very, very helpful to me. And the only, the only, the only additional questions that I have for tonight, without, you know, really taking a look at all the data that you've presented, is I'm, I'm trying to remember and wrap my head around the amount of layoffs that happened versus the amount of positions that were ultimately eliminated versus new positions that we have this year, and, you know, if you could give us an update as far as, you know, you've already stated that 45% of, of our budget for unemployment's been utilized so far this year, we're in the first quarter. So what is this gonna look like, and what are your, what are we going to be doing going forward in order to, you know, combat this and make sure that the money in the district's going to the kids and not unemployment costs?
Yeah, and that's been a central theme of tonight, hasn't it? That we need to retain our teachers. That's really, at the end of the day, laying off folks is a bad strategy, it's expensive, and you lose the talent that you ultimately need. And as I, in response to some other questions, we post for positions, and there's no applicants at this time of the year, so we really have to continue to invest the people we have. It's a very complicated scenario at this point.
Okay, so, about how many, like, how many people have, were laid off from last year to this year, total?
Thirty-six positions were eliminated last year.
How many were added at the start of this year?
Well, we've talked about four adjustment counselors. I don't have the complete addition here, it's mostly been people moving around, and it's been additions, but the adjustment counselor, excuse me, I'm saying adjustment, engagement counselors.
Engagement counselors.
Were new position created as a result of this data. So there's four currently employed, plans to add three at the elementary schools. You know, the other side of this equation, it makes it very complicated, and then folks feel as if you're not being transparent, is with salary breakage, or when you hire, you have positions, they go vacant for long periods of time. Now you have different amounts of salary that you have in the line that don't correspond with your budget, which makes the end-of-the-year re-accounting so much more important. But this is a pretty complex issue. But we'll be happy to continue to update you on our staffing. You know, the other position is librarian, as I'm talking, I spoke about that this evening, too. And we're gonna, you know, you gotta remember, the ultimate goal here is to improve the school district, quite candidly, right? So I can be honest with you, as a superintendent of schools, I'd be a lot more concerned about how many positions here and how many positions there, and I can tell you what superintendents do, because I did it for years, is a whole tap dance about all that. I'm not interested in the tap dance, I'm interested in improving the school, and happy to give you accountings of who we hire and who we don't have, because trying to get to this place where you believe in the numbers, and you have a lot of good reasons not to believe the numbers. So we have to get to that place. Just, my caveat is, it's actually pretty complicated getting there, because there's a lot of moving parts. But I am committed to keep coming back, we'll keep talking. I would invite you to set an appointment, I'd be happy to sit with you. I sit with many members of this chamber, have meetings for hours, happy to do it, happy to answer questions. Jackie and I have a standing meeting every month, same with John, so happy to do that. Trying to get to a place where people have confidence in our plan, confidence in my commitment, and our desire to get where we need to be, which is having the schools do a much better job, which again, requires supporting our teachers. So there's, there's a lot to this, but I do believe we'll get there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Chair Ryan, appreciate it through you. Thank you, Dr. Vilar, for a pretty comprehensive presentation tonight. I don't intend to bring up points or ask you questions that are quite as complex or complicated. I think that the questions that have been asked have been fair, and your answers have been direct. I do have a couple of quick things, and not to beat a dead horse, but I do concur with School Committee Member Shay, Counselor Jovan, about year-to-date spending. We have the number that you and Seth provided, when it is related to unemployment. I think that year-to-date spending for the other major account categories would be very interesting, not just because I'm interested as a counselor to analyze the school district, but I'm interested in analyzing and criticizing myself as a counselor that voted to not give you an increase for this year. I want to see those numbers as well, so we appreciate your candor on the matter, and I also understand that KVS is difficult and complicated, so I won't talk anymore to that. You have a lot on your plate, there's a lot of weight on your shoulders, as well as that of your principals, your educators, your staff, those that are working throughout the school system, but some of the things that maybe we couldn't talk about tonight, I'd just like to compliment the participants from the high school and the middle school, and the Town Manager Substance Abuse Advisory Committee, working toward substance abuse prevention and education in the schools, with your authorization, I'm sure, but also with Red Ribbon Week, which is upcoming, and I don't want to take Ron's thunder, but Principal Danby and Principal Keenan from the high school and middle school have been involved, as have their designees. I've been honored to attend some of those meetings, and I know that you have some great things lined up for presentations to, to help motivate kids and students to stay off of drugs. And I believe that this approach is much better than what we saw in the late 80s, early 90s with some of the other initial programs. Also, you brought up tonight capital needs for snowplow truck and a wheelchair van. Sorry to hear that, but I also appreciate that you're giving us some advance notice that you're gonna be looking down the line. And just to comment on that, I won't ask you to speculate, but I certainly hope that the future merger of the school departments, facilities, management team, and DPW, which I'd still support entirely to move forward, could help alleviate some of that by combining resources. Also want to thank you, you've been very receptive, as you've said, to the counselors that call on you, ask for meetings, that certainly has been the case with me, and I know also with Counselor Adams, O'Clare, Counselor Jovan, and Counselor Daniel, who is on vacation tonight. We appreciate that individually, and when we call, call on you in tandem, perhaps. By the same token, I found you very open to bringing forth either yourself, or your designee, or Mr. Como, when it comes to attending Town Council Subcommittee meetings when school matters are present or when they arise. I'll take you up on that, I know that we're gonna be talking about some of those things in the future. But also, this is more of a point, and I don't mind looking like a bad guy tonight, and this isn't at you or your team, but I look out into this audience, and I see two residents, one who is here at every Town Council meeting, another who may or may not be here as a parent, or perhaps in another capacity. So aside from your staff, there are four sitting there, a couple of camera operators, there isn't one parent in this room. So I certainly hope that they're at home watching tonight, because this is absolutely critical to the future of our community. When it comes to our future, schools are paramount, and if they're not, I certainly hope that they're interacting with your principals, the educators that are teaching and molding their children, and with your office. I don't have the kids, but if they're looking at us up here, we will do our jobs, we need them to do their parts, and I don't care if anybody agrees with me, it's very disappointing to see an empty audience. Thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Counselor Sees?
Thank you again, Madam Chair, and I appreciate your coming forward and answering all of these questions and taking the time to talk to us, thank you very much. Two quick questions, both of them specifically budget-related. One is, can you give us a quick update on the impact of school choice in the charter currently?
So from memory, it's actually a little bit better than our last year experience. Seth, I don't know if you have stored in your database more specific response around our charter schools?
We find a lot in our total one, but that information is reported to the state, so after that, it'll be sent to us to validate, so I mean, he's probably finding the number of school choices.
Okay. Okay. And the other question I had is, do you have a rough idea of, if you have a rough idea of how much the, what the cost of the substitutes is likely to be, and how will it impact the overall budget with so many teacher vacancies?
Substitutes are a significant problem, just obtaining them.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
So I have, as far as projections to that, I know that, again, Seth is carrying a line, but I have a lot of concern, because we're not, we're not able to find them. So we're either collapsing classes, or pulling, like, a T-SOL teacher, or a special education teacher, asking an EA, an education assistant to step up, all which are very bad solutions.
Yeah.
So we're actually exploring different means of how could we increase our subpool? So we're looking at surrounding communities, what are they paying substitutes, we're looking at subservices and what those costs would be. It's a, it's a complex problem, but what I can't underscore enough, and I say this at my leaders' operations meeting all the time, when your teacher's missing, it's a huge disruption to a school, just one teacher. huge disruption to a school, just one teacher. And if you have a quality sub, you have a chance at continuing education. If, if you have someone who's not an educator with no training whatsoever, now you have a babysitter, that's not good enough. So it's a real problem. You know, my preference would be to have our own building subs at all buildings and multiple folks who are trained in our curriculum. But we're having a talent problem, we can't get enough people to begin with, so to create additional positions like that would be hard. So we'll give you updates when we come back with more financial information about the status and where we are in those expenditures, I'm sure. But if you know some people that are college grads that like kids and want to substitute for us, we have plenty of rooms, there are folks can go.
Thank you very much.
Is there, uh, Mr. Bishop?
Good, Dr. Val, what was the enrollment for October 1? What's our October 1?
I believe the number is 2032, does that sound right Seth?
I too have major concerns about the budget and where we're going with the future. There's no, there's, it's no secret that we, one of our big tax bases could potentially not be here. I, I hope that we're going to have the town council really dissect the budget in the future. The school committee can do nothing, you know, we might as well just, you know, go out and join the pumpkins growing the plant out in the garden somewhere. But the town council needs to really assess where these positions are. I mean, line item budgets to look at the, what personnel, where the staffing is, are they in the classrooms or are they not in the classrooms? I think that's something we have to really, really, really look at, you have to look at, we can't look at anything to be, to be honest with you. You know, the budget, the, the budget that just closed, that was heavily funded using revolving accounts. I think that budget, we put about $2.3 million from revolving accounts into that when, when the receiver before Dr. Valar was here, I can't think of his name, Russ Johnson was here. Appreciate that we rely heavily on grant money to, to, that we use quite a bit of the, the school redesign budget to, money to balance.
Uh, no, some of it's Hurricane Maria money.
Okay, okay. These are one-time expenditures, you know, always revolving accounts are going to build up like that. I think we really have to be cognizant of the fact that the budget is going to become really challenging for everybody here. The other thing I'd like to ask for the next meeting, accountability, I know, I know when they rolled out the two-year-round plan, there was the big, they were, the Dussie was going to be accountable, going to be accountable to the taxpayers, the students and staff, the parents. I'd really like to see a five-year look back at MCAS. Okay, as, as, you know, that's what we based everything on, that's why, that's why Dussie took over the district, because our MCAS scores were where they were. We're below 5%. I think we're probably, I think we all have to ask our questions, Dussie's been here 33 months. Are we better off now than we were 33 months ago? I think the proof is in the scores, they've had, they've had full control of the district for 33 months, hire, file, do whatever they want. Let's see, is it working? If not, we need to get Dussie in here and find out how long they're going to continue. If it's not working, you know, as Dr. Val said, he teaches, he jumps after three weeks to look at the data, he's willing to move the ship. Well, if it's not working, let's look at the data, okay? And let's look at those scores, let's do a five or six-year look back and make a decision. And, you know, let's do it publicly, the parents need to know. I want to know, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Just to follow up real quick, I will make sure that's on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. San Angelo?
Thank you, just a couple of comments. First, I want to thank you, Dr. Valar and Seth, the working relationship between the school administration and town administration has been excellent. And I know you guys have depended a lot upon both Karen and Mindy for a lot of support and, and I think they've given you some great support. I also do want to comment about the, some of the things we work together on, I think from the Chromebooks to the actual books, to the IT money we got for a grant for you guys, to a whole host of issues, that has really been nice and seen the cooperation between the two departments, I think has worked out well. I, I do want to comment just a little bit about the budget, just to assure counselors and frankly even school committee members, during the last quarter of the budget season, there's a lot of discussion between the town side of government and the school system about making sure that they live within their budget and that, that when they come in, they have their budgets, or their budget completed for the year end, because it has to really be audited by a state auditor, as you're aware. And there's a lot of discussion about, particularly with Seth, about making sure that that budget is within existing budget and it doesn't go over. Karen puts a lot of pressure, not only in the school department, but all, all of our departments, if, if any transfers need to be made at the end of year between different accounts, we want to make sure they're done in time so that we understand if in fact we have a deficit or a surplus at the end of the year. So I just want to assure counselors that some things you just don't see, but as you know Karen, I think those of you who trust Karen, understand very well that Karen is on top of the school department as well as all the other departments. And we've, we've been working with them on a lot of budget issues where, quite frankly, things that were done in the past were not done as well as I think a lot of us would hope. And there's been a lot of transfers to resolve things like funding of school transportation and special ed, and it's been about a tremendous amount of work. I mean, I, you know, Seth laughs or Jeff thinks, oh, we gave two cents back to the town. That was quite a challenge, to fix some of the problems that the school system had to deal with regard to, particularly those two accounts, especially in the, the school busing issues. So we are putting things together from a fiscal state of view, I think the school system is, is improving dramatically, but there's still work to be done. I think the unit system, I want to really be clear, there's a two-year implementation of that system, but I think the school system has really been driving that project, and they've, you know, they, they have actually funded part of the project and they've been working with Karen to move that out. So I think, at least on the financial side, we're seeing slow, steady improvement, but I'm not going to lie, it's been a tremendous amount of work. And the town side of government has been a true participant with the school system in, in making this work. And I'm seeing progress from the relationship between the town side of government and the school system. I don't think this turnaround's, I think, you know, I, I read an article by Jeff and I think we all read it, where he's talking about a seven-year turnaround. I think it's nice to hear the state actually be honest. I think the, the immediate issue of, oh, we're going to turn this around in three, three years was a, was a dream and not a reality. So it's, it's nice to see administration that is actually talking the reality and understand that we're all in this for the long haul and it's going to take some time to see the scores increase like you would like to see. I'd like to see them increase too, but I don't think you're going to see it in one or two years, I think it's going to take quite a bit of time to get there. But I, at least for, from my point of view and working with the school administration, I'm seeing steady progress, slow, but at least we're moving in a good direction. Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Doctor, I appreciate you coming down here and giving us the brief, I appreciate today's brief, the brutal honesty that you're providing the counselors, or at least for me. I, I understand that language and, and I think it's helped out quite a bit, understanding where you're coming from. I do understand that your job and Seth's job and all, everybody that's here, your staff is constantly fluid, constantly moving around from budgets to teachers to, you know, some of the things you briefed us on, not just today, but in the past, says that some of the management skills were not there prior to you arriving. So I want to thank you for uncovering some of these, or pulling these rocks out and finding some of these programs, these books, that have never been used but taxpayers paid for them. My question here is, some of these programs that the teachers, have the teachers found these programs that the taxpayers paid for, all this stuff, and then like this, somebody had a great idea fairy, and then all of a sudden they no longer, like they got it and they didn't want to implement it anymore? Was it because administrative changes or was it because of, you know, it was outdated?
Well, you know, it's, when you look at instructional materials, there's often, is it aligned to standards is a major question you could ask. And now you'd have to know where to go to actually uncover that information, which isn't always that easy to do, so figuring that out. Then you have instructional philosophies, you have different leadership philosophies and different initiatives. And I think that in the perfect storm of massive leadership change, people come in, they get an idea, this is a good idea, we're going to do this, and this will be our quick fix. And so they go out and they, they grab that material and then, you know, look to implement it. In some instances here, we've had enough turnover where you could have bought it last week and the person who was driving that change left, right? And so then what happens? It sits. You know, teachers are incredibly inundated in their daily work, so to ask them to change their instructional material is a heavy lift. Like we, we talk about it and, oh, so we have this new Nat Geo, well, that's great, but that represents for a teacher, all new lesson plans for every day of the year, 180 days, it's all new learning for them. So now they have to go and master new materials and understand the nuances of all that, figure out how that works with the kids they have in their class and how to adapt it, et cetera. So it's a huge lift. And unfortunately, in desperate times, people think, whoa, we're going to get all of this new, so we're going to do new math, new science and so, and it all piles up, but those poor individuals can only learn really one program at a time. So I think all that contributed to a lot of really good intentions, but not really great execution.
Got it, thank you. You wanted me to bring up the playgrounds over in Charlton Street? Any, any updates with that? I, I'm getting from second party here, so.
Yes, from my understanding that the, not the school playground, but the, the park behind it, there's some disrepair there, and that's certainly something that we'd be happy to, you know, try to figure out a solution to. The schools use much closer to their grounds, so it's not on my radar as, as a need, but clearly there's an issue. And again, we're all in this, you know, together. Ron, I think you have some clarification, I can tell.
My understanding is that DPW and Mike Como already worked out and did the repairs, there were some bolts and things missing to it, it has been fixed, and as far as I'm concerned, it's okay again, unless there's some new information, but that was handled through, actually I think DP, I brought it to DPW's attention and DPW brought to Mike's attention, I think Mike is the one that actually got it worked through his staff. As far as I understand right now, that park is safe and usable, is, is at least the current situation. Unless there's something I don't know, but we recently took care of that issue.
Well, I appreciate having it get on my radar, I will follow up on our side with Mike to make sure, but it sounds like they've already resolved it, which is perfect.
I probably didn't come across really well on that subject, but I appreciate Counselor Nash reminding me of that too as well, so thank you, Doctor. Last couple of things, I understand it's going to take some time to change mindsets, you know, and to a positive aspect of what the kids are doing, what the teachers are doing. But like I said a few times, if there's anything that's, you know, you want us to get out, please send me an email with information and, and I'm willing to communicate constantly with the public as much as I can. So I want to thank you again for your time tonight and all the counselors here as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Jovan, you want?
Just to follow up through you to Counselor Nash, Mike Como will be at the EHS meeting tomorrow night, I talked to him earlier at another meeting, so we can follow up at the meeting tomorrow and I'm sure he'll be able to provide an answer to that.
Yes, Mrs. Angelo?
Just one last comment as well, just to let everyone know, I think you all recall when we used the Community Compact grant to do a facilities management study of all town buildings. Myself and the school receiver will be working on applying for that same kind of grant, Community Compact there to do a, an evaluation of all school facilities as well and get a long-term capital improvement plan for all the buildings there as well. So I talked to the Community Compact people today, Sean Powers specifically, and we will be applying together for that specific grant, up to potentially $30,000 to evaluate all school buildings. That will occur in the next couple of days.
Counselor Nash, do you have anything you wanted, I had you, okay. Counselor O'Clair?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. So I had just had a couple of follow-up things based on what Ms. Shay and also what Mr. Bishop had said about the budgetary process. I know that your predecessor would pretty much start budgets up from scrap from year to year, from scratch, not scrap. Sorry. And, you know, you would have different positions with different names from year to year, there was very, it was very, it was incredibly difficult to follow where the money was going from year to year, what was getting increases, what wasn't, because it wasn't in any kind of discernible format to really compare over the years. You know, Mr. Bishop's brought up how this past year, you know, money's been taken from some of the revolving accounts to, to balance out and satisfy the budget. For the years going forward, I think that a lot of us would like to see more of a plan and more, more, more numbers coming out that are solidified and workable as far as the budget goes through the budget process. And, you know, I think that, I said it, I've mentioned it before at least once or twice, is that this community needs, needs to be able to trust the receiver and we need to build that trust together, because we're all on the same team, we all want to see this district flourish. And, you know, I think that working together's the best way to do that. And the more that we trust you and you trust us, the better the working relationship is. And I do plan to take you up on, you know, sitting down and having a discussion about some of the things that I personally feel need to be addressed. And so I do thank you for coming out tonight, those are my thoughts and that's it, thanks.
Is there anybody else?
I would just want to ask, I have a couple of questions. One, I wanted to ask you more specifically on curriculum development, that's something that I've been really concerned with. It hasn't seemed to be the biggest focus due to all the biggest, bigger issues we've been dealing with the last couple of years, but I want to know specifically what you're doing more on curriculum development and making sure the curriculum we're providing is par, and two, what you're doing to provide support for that curriculum?
So the two areas of focus, school climate and culture, language arts instruction K through 12. And so the K through 12 language arts instruction involves all new curriculum and resource materials aligned with Massachusetts standards. So that's the work with Momenta at the K, pre-K5, is working with teachers, standards-based instruction, balanced literacy for elementary school, so that's all curricular-based. And the 6 through 12 work, again, is standards-based literacy instruction, looking at language arts curriculum to make sure that what's happening in classrooms is aligned with mass standards and is rigorous enough for our kids to do well. It's, it's a lot of work, it's, you know, ticks off as two items, but those two items are huge. It's a, it's a great deal of focus and work for the district to get those two done well.
I guess I just want to dig a little more into the 6 through 12, because we heard a lot for the K through 5, but I want a little more about the 6 through 12. What exactly, what specific programs can you point to that you've been implementing to help make sure that the curriculum we're providing to the students is working? Because I know you talk about the Momenta program quite a bit, but I want a little more detail as to what you're doing for 6 through 12?
Sure, so Instruction Partners has a rubric that we're using, and I can actually share this with you, but it's a pretty dense document that allows us, and we've gone into classrooms, every language arts and mathematics classroom actually at the high school, middle school, and observed the instruction. They've also collected samples of student work and conducted analysis of that work that the students produced, and looking at that to determine whether or not our instruction is aligned with Massachusetts standards. And over time, we're developing or adopting a curriculum that is aligned with that standards, that gives teachers the support materials so that they can use authentic literature, real books, to teach language arts standards in our middle and high school, getting kids reading literature, and then how to use and respond to that literature and writing, et cetera. So there is a process, it's a pretty elaborate process, the department chairs have been involved in that process, they're excited about the materials, there will be training that's focused specifically on the delivery of that instructional approach. And again, our walkthroughs look for evidence of progress in that area at the secondary level, so 6 through 12.
Thank you, just kind of, I guess, it's not really a follow-up, but I guess it's a little dive deeper. Basically on, you talked about a lot of training for our new teachers, but I want to know what ongoing training we're providing to current teachers as well as teacher development and teacher-based around the curriculum, like the, what the teaching plans are looking like, more about?
Yep, so the professional development days that we've had scheduled, all are focused on the district priorities. And so based on what your role is in the district and how it meets that priority, you'll have specific professional development. So in the language arts area, at the secondary level, again, they're working on the implementation of this language arts curriculum. So there's the introduction and training, we actually just had their first training meeting with our friends from Instruction Partners, with the principals, with the English teachers, all together, working on this curricular document. That's part of their ongoing training. So then during team meetings, their department chairs and leaders work with them on how is this going, what are the instructional difficulties you're having, how are you solving these issues with students, engaging them, et cetera? And, and that continues throughout the year. You do that until you establish a baseline of knowledge and skill around the delivery of that curriculum. Could take quite some time.
Okay. Thank you. On budget matters, I, this is not going to be a surprise to you, I'm looking at that, I am still a little concerned about the long-term fiscal solvency of the school district. It's been pointed out by many people here tonight that a lot of the one-time infusions, along with what's really concerning to me is the near a million dollars, the state's infusing, what's gone now, once that's gone, what's going to happen with the school district? But beyond that, I'm also concerned with the short term. As you pointed out, we're already 45% through a huge line item. We found some savings, which could prove to be useful to helping absorb some of the fiscal, some of the deficits spending we might have in that particular line item. But I'm concerned we're going to face yet another deficit year, mid-year like we did last year, where we weren't prepared for what costs are coming down. And I'm a little concerned, I know this year we really had no choice due to the financial stress we had, but I'm a little concerned that we don't have money set aside. A lot of school districts do set money sides for particular reasons. I know this particular budget process was strained, but it, the fiscal conservative me is a little concerned that we don't have anything put aside as a school district in case of an emergency like that transportation and special education issue we had last year. So I would like to talk, for you to talk a little bit about what you're doing this year for this year's current budget and current dollars you have set up to make sure that we don't end up in the same situation we did last year. And two, what you're going to do in the next coming budget cycle to help make sure that there's a little more padding in the budget in case something were to happen.
So, you know, to be candid, we had a $3.1 million budget for deficits, so it's a little bit more than constrained. It was dramatic and we did cut 36 positions as a result of that, and so that definitely has been a pressure. Special education costs are often unpredictable and something that you have to be worried about, so be worried about that. I can tell you from experience, however, that anytime a school district marks something as a contingency account, you can guarantee that account won't be funded in the future, right? That's seen as not a priority expenditure, and folks will say, well, we can cut that expenditure, which creates this dynamic where we've been talking about all night is transparency in the budget and belief in the numbers, and then, well, what do you do if you have an emergency? If the budget gets too tight, then the only recourse in an emergency is to come back to your town council and say, hey, look, guys, we cut this budget real tight, we thought we called it right, but we're 50 grand off and we need you to give us another allocation of money. I mean, that's, that's the reality of a budget that's too tight in a budget that doesn't have contingency built into it. But I just haven't seen many communities with the fiscal restraint, and I'm just being candid, to have a contingency line labeled contingency in a school budget. I've never seen it. You know, it's unfortunate. It does exist in, in corporate lines and people plan that way. You know, you do a home renovation, you have a contingency line. We've never had that luxury. But yes, I do worry about, and we keep an eye on our expenditures, we definitely don't want to go over. The worst-case scenario would be having to come to you for more money. That's, that's not an acceptable scenario. So, and long-term solvency, I've heard several times and I also agree. Part of my plan is that what, in my mind, when my job is done, performance is up, the district is stable, and there is a sustainable budget in place, that they can say, Jeff, you're done, and Southbridge has local control and a budget that works. Candidly, in the short term, to get to capacity, we'll spend more on training and skills and materials than you normally would. But the problem comes back to what I said earlier, revolving door of talent, because you can't spend all that money on training every year. We have to invest in people. We got to get people to stick. That, once we can get people to stick and we invest in people and our capacity increases, we'll be more sustainable. And then you can back off some of those DESI funds and some of those other grants. So this is why we need this conversation long-term, because you raise very good points to be concerned about. They're all legitimate, very, very important issues to keep our eyes on.
Thank you, Dr. Valar. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to ask a question of the receiver? I just want to, again, thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate this. I want to thank Council Chair Jovan for working with me and Dr. Valar to plan this. I will look forward to working out another joint meeting in the budget season to come together and go with the budget and with a fine-tooth comb, I hope, and make sure that we're all on the same page as to the direction that we want to take the school district in, so. Any further comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we have, okay, we have a motion, but we also have the next school committee meeting agenda item, quickly. I have to entertain the motion unless somebody tracks it because there was a motion.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Quickly, next school committee meeting is Tuesday, November 13th at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers. And now I will gladly take that motion to adjourn. Okay. Motion. Second.